Okay, you're on.
We'll call meeting director, please stand for the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Kyle's not here. Brad, are you the speaker? Come on up, please.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Brad Campbell. I'm vice chair of the hospital board. Our last meeting, the board voted to ask the district, our Broadwater Health District to request from your authorized to request an election in November. We're asking for $200,000 spread over the next three.
Three?
Three, yes. And we're just a little bit ahead of ourselves here because the district board hasn't met yet. They'll meet tomorrow night. So, but we're here to let you know that we are making the request. If all goes as planned, the district board will approve our request and submit a formal application to you.
Well, is it a mail ballot election or?
No, general election.
Pardon?
No.
Go to the form.
That is, yeah.
So are you going to put it in conjunction with the cities? Municipal election?
We're not aware that there is another election scheduled for November.
Municipal election with me?
Is there?
Yeah.
November 5th. Okay. Then that's what we should do if it's there. When the last discussion I was involved in was uncertain whether it was an option or not.
The municipal election, is that just the city?
Yes, right. You know, that would be just city and yours would be countywide.
So.
That could create problems.
Well, tell me what you recommend.
What I recommend basically? I'd recommend a mail ballot election. You'd get a lot better turnout.
Do we have to decide that today?
No.
We'll leave that tomorrow night with the district then.
Right. But you just, you do.
We did not discuss that portion of it. We assumed that we were going to be the only ones on the election and that we would have the entire cost of the election. So, but you're right, we should consider that.
Yeah, something to think about.
It might be a good idea for it.
You don't want it the same day as the city because that's just going to confuse people.
Okay, but, all right, there's a little bit cut in both ways there, but that's where we got the most votes the last time, but.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's the, not with the city, but school.
But we'll give it some more discussion tomorrow night. And then the formal request.
Barb just said it wasn't with the city, it was with the school election. That would be countywide other than down at J-24.
Okay.
Okay, we'll be awaiting a letter.
At least your word's coming.
Very good.
There should be a letter soon. And the district board is meeting tomorrow night.
All right, very good.
So, any other questions?
$200,000 over three years?
Yes. And that'll pick up just as the other ones are coming to a close. Keep rolling forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, on this subject, it's my understanding that the hospital needs to have that paperwork tuned in by Wednesday, the 21st. And since we aren't meeting again until after that date, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't go ahead and have a vote so that those signatures can at the very least be stamped on that day or come in and sign it if we decide to vote in that direction.
If we could ask you to approve subject to the health, Broadwater Health District, that would probably be certainly a concern.
And I think that would be appropriate rather than putting these guys out of even an ability to pursue this if that's what they decide to do.
Is that a motion?
It will be just a second.
It's just happening by the 23rd or sort of.
21st.
Location. Who has to have elections?
That's by putting it in with the city election.
Or to have it for the general date is my understanding. Or the general election date.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. And we've, it's been our practice in the past when anyone, when any department has approached and asked to have a mail levy election, it's been our practice to go ahead and support that and approve it. The bottom line is, it's the voters' decision, not ours. And so for us to decide that you can't have it is taking that decision away from the voters. So with that, I would move that we, if a request comes before this board by the 21st, this Wednesday, for a mail levy election request, that we support it and sign it on time, on, by the 21st.
I have no problem with that.
Let's move to second in. We grant approval pending the district board's meeting tomorrow night for a mail levy election, $200,000 spread over three years. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad.
Kim?
Madam Chair, Tim Ravendall. Just a quick question or for clarification. Where does the arbitrary date of the 21st come in? Because if you do a mail ballot election type thing, there's certainly a time period for preparation of that.
Seventy-five days.
Seventy-five days, so, but the mail ballots don't have to be held on a specific date in the past.
No, but they have to, the request has to be seventy-five days before the date of the election.
Okay, and that is the 21st. Okay, but again, the reason I ask is because if you aren't going to hold an actual general election ballot, it wouldn't necessarily be on the 21st.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I just would like to clarification. Is this in addition to the PILT monies that were requested on the 5th?
Yes, it is.
It is. So that's a total of?
Six hundred and fifty.
Six fifty?
And I think that's a little bit unclear. I mean, unclear is the wrong word, but we haven't approved any PILT at this point, so it's not really an addition. It's a request in addition to the other request, but there isn't a solid sum of money yet.
But they've got a reason for requesting this much money, I take it, I assume.
Brad?
But there is a timing difference. The PILT request is really for this year. And anything, the election that were passed this November would not provide any funds until the following November.
Okay, thank you. Harold?
Thing that I got a question is, doesn't this, all this activity circumvent the vote, the vote that's already taken place?
How do you mean?
Well, they've already had a vote for the mail levies for the hospital funding. Am I incorrect in that?
This is in addition to.
Well, to me, it's circumventing the will of the voters already.
Brad, you want to speak to that?
I mean, you can go around any corner you want to, but it looks like to me that's what it's doing. Kind of straightforward guy.
I can speak a little bit to that, Madam Chair. It's not a circumventation. It's probably a thing if you follow the courts and on TV and stuff like that. It's new evidence. A clarification of our position, for instance. It's a difference of what we have been doing and where we are today and where we move to be in the future.
Does it cost the county more money every time that you guys do these things, though?
It does count to put on an election. That's why we've always tried to run it at the same time with another election so that the costs would be shared. We've tried to be as careful with our money as we can be because it is our money.
And let me clarify, too. It's not the county taxpayers that are going to pay for the election. It is the hospital or the school or the, whatever the department is.
It's the same.
Still tax money, but.
Not necessarily. No, the hospital is a private business. It is not a county hospital. So just to clarify.
Well, if it's private, Nora, how in the world are we responsible for what's happening over at the hospital? Why don't it stay private instead of being countywide taxation and all of this conversation and all this time wasted and all of the, all the all? What are we talking about?
John, I don't think, the county isn't taking it over. The county has an interest in the building. It's where our.
You can't prove that by me because I see what all this money's being appropriated. $400,000 here, $50,000 there, a million, $2 million over here. And what is it all?
They have come to us and wanted help to keep the hospital going and keep 65 jobs over there for those people that are there. That's all it is.
If it was a private industry in this other thing, have you helped the lime plant or the sawmill?
No.
Okay.
Same thing.
If they're private industries, I think you're setting a bad precedent.
This is not a private industry. It's a non-for-profit. And it sure is a not-for-profit. I'll guarantee that.
It certainly is.
Madam Chair, if I may, just again for some clarification. We've discussed this over the last couple of weeks. Barb is right. It is a nonprofit, private.
Not-for-profit.
Corporation. But not-for-profit, that's correct. Also, the county owns the land and has an interest in the building. And we have a lease that allows the hospital to use county property. In that lease, it actually has provisions that make it very difficult for the hospital to run without some kind of assistance. Federal law says you have to accept somebody who comes to your emergency room. Broadwater County's lease that goes way back to the 80s, if I'm not mistaken, states you will not only accept anyone to the emergency room, but also anyone for your services, whether they pay or not. Our hospital is running right now about $320,000 a year in charity care. And that's people who come in for services but that are not paying for those services. And so it's, there is a relationship there. Yes, it is a nonprofit. Yes, it is private. But yes, it is also a marriage between the hospital and the county through all those other little tentacles. And that's how it was set up years ago. So I hope that helps.
Cheryl, you had a question?
I just want to be sure that I understand. When he was saying $200,000 over three years, that's a total of $200,000 or $200,000 each year for three years for a total of six grand, $600?
$200,000 spread over three years.
Two hundred thousand each year.
Each year, okay.
See, that wasn't clear. I was going to ask the same question. Because that was misconception of, because it sounded like it was over the three years. This is part of what gets us really upset.
Cheryl?
And one other question. Has the hospital provided a financial statement yet? Income, assets, assets and liabilities?
We do that on a monthly basis. We have, the information is available on board meetings monthly.
So I could come over tomorrow and get a copy of that? Are those audited financials?
They're not audited at this point. They're prepared by the chief financial officer of the hospital.
But they have to be audited.
And supplied to the board monthly.
Okay. Kim?
Just for clarification, once again, Madam Chair, Tim Ravendall. I would like to know if I got that straight also, that this is basically reauthorizing the ongoing mail levy or if this is a separate new one? Because we've had a three-year running since, I think, back in about 1992, '91, somewhere in there, where every three years it's just been kind of renewed to help the hospital. So is this, in fact, I think, referenced as renewing that same or is this above and beyond?
This is above and beyond.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it is. It's only above and beyond for the first year.
For the first year. There's one year where they overlap.
The second, third year.
There's one year where they overlap, Brad.
Pardon?
There's one year they will overlap.
That's what I just said.
So above and beyond.
It overlaps the first year.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
John?
John Wright. I holler foul. And I want it known, because you just voted on something you didn't even know what you were voting on. You thought it was one, $200,000 over three years. And now it's $600,000 over two years. So foul. Want a new vote.
What I voted again was to be able to put it to the people if the letter comes in. I didn't approve that.
Yes, you did. You said it.
No, no, wait. What they voted for was to act on the letter that will come. They will act on the formal request from the Broadwater Health District.
Now, my next last question is, do you really understand now what you're voting on or will vote on? Because it's not very clear, and especially out here in the audience. We can't keep up with this kind of logic of telling just enough to distort what we're hearing.
Next.
I just have a question of the board. Because when we had that embezzlement problem, as you remember, Barb, we thought we were getting an audit for $16,000 for one day. And the CPA firm said, no, it was just a review. So my question is, do you have it in writing that this is an audit? So if something happens, you can go back and sue them. Because remember, they ducked right out from underneath that whole thing. And the embezzlement was, she, the person was only charged with taking $100,000, but the figure was actually closer to $300,000. So.
I have no idea what she's talking about.
Well, Barb knows.
That's rather ancient history. Do you want me to address that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
This happened some time ago. And at the time, we did think that we had a real audit done. It turned out it was just a review. Audits are, as those of you who work with those things all the time know, go much deeper than a review. But I would refer to Chairman Phil Huber of the THS Board to tell you how the real audits have been done lately.
They have had audits in the past done by financial firms. They're rather expensive to do. We have not had a current audit, partly because the hospital's finances were in some turmoil over the past few years. We intend to get an audit once we get a clean financial statement over a one-year period of time and we have something that we think the auditors can look at.
Thank you. Is that Phil?
Well, it tells me something, yes.
Well, they switch computer systems in the middle and so tracking things, it means that you have to.
Yeah, they were switching computers when I was on the board. It seems like a common.
But what I'm saying is they're taking time to look at things over and that's why they haven't had the audit yet. Until they have something to put in front of an auditor, there's really not much you can.
Well, then, so we don't, how do we know what we're?
Well, you had an audit, what, a year? Year and a half.
I don't remember the last one.
Well, I guess my only question is, how do you know you really need this money if you don't have an audit, a true audit?
Well, we have financial statements that are being prepared by the CFO. And we have reasonable confidence that those are accurate over the period of time that he's been doing them. So we have confidence that those numbers are correct. But we don't have an audit, which is some external review of those numbers.
Well, my only opinion.
But we don't have a year's worth of information available.
To do it, to do an audit.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask if any other questions catch Brad out in the hall or Barb out in the hall. We need to go on with some other business. Mrs. Hurtman? Thank you.
So we've only received one packet for the engineering services for the basketball. Even though we only have one, I still thought it was appropriate. But I didn't open anything up.
That's correct.
And it is from WWC. I brought scoring sheets as well. I didn't know it was a board. Felt they would be members, only had one application. So basically, since this is a contract, this will be paid out. This is a contract that's going to be paid out of the commission's budget. This is a decision that the commission will have to make that I don't want to proceed with this, but I would give these sheets to just in case, you know, if you want to make the application, you sure can. But I didn't do any scoring, obviously, I didn't open them.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Will you please speak up?
I've just passed around the only submittal we have for the county engineer, flood管 administrator, planning services.
And Nicole, you had mentioned that the money for this contract would come out of the commissioner's budget. In the past, the planning department just paid for any calls that you made for planning resources.
Correct. Yes, that's correct. I should probably include that in there because this is for planning resources. If I do have to call in WWC, if I have any questions, any planning questions specifically to planning, then that comes out of the planning budget.
Another issue that's been brought forward, too, since we're on the budget, is the need for a flood plan line item so that we can more accurately track for flood plan administration and what the cost is with that and how frequent it is. Which doesn't have to be done today, but I just thought I'd bring it up since we're on the subject.
You know, I haven't even, I haven't looked at any of it.
So far, I haven't seen it.
It'd be under project management, number 12. That could be something that's addressed if you decide to send a contract with them.
I think you'd want to know how much.
Yeah, we should. Yeah, definitely.
Sean will be here later today, about 3 o'clock. Perhaps we can ask him to address this then. And this is all that was in the packet?
Yep, that's all that was in it. The transmittal sheets, basically, this just shows what was in the packet. Five books in there.
And it shows nothing?
No, I didn't see anything on their cost. Previously, when the commission had signed a contract with WWC, it was in the contract. Those dollar amounts were. So it could be something that would be negotiated prior to signing a contract. So he could submit something before that contract. It's either renewed or signing a new contract.
Sure. And he wouldn't have provided a contract at this point because we're not at that point yet.
Correct.
Go ahead.
I would have thought you had it in here, though, wouldn't you?
It was not one of our requests. It was not sent out in our statement of qualifications that we were not looking for their cost of services.
Let's say if we had two or three, we'd sure be comparing costs.
Well, and that's where we're at with contracting with an examining land surveyor. And I did get a letter from Stuart Nash as well. As you recall, we had two examining land surveyors that applied for the examining land surveyor position.
It might be in your folder. I've seen that where I stuck it in there.
No, it was just a file. There, I did put it in there. So I haven't opened this, I haven't opened this either. But a letter from Stuart Nash, because that was going to be the tiebreaker essentially. And so we could, we could have used that same thing here or if you wanted to request that before you send a contract.
Well, then Sean will be here in an hour, so we can.
I think he's coming in sooner than that. Doesn't he need to talk about the, or did he cancel?
He didn't cancel. I was requested that he have his appointment at 3 o'clock so that more people could come.
Oh, okay.
Making a lot of discussion. Ron Spoon, Denise Thompson and Justin Weisner.
Oh, okay.
So we just switched.
Okay.
We did not get on the agenda the examining land surveyor decision. So we should probably pick that up the next week rather than jumping ahead. And then look at the two comparisons at that time. Can you come back at 3:00 when Sean is here?
I might be able to. I don't have any examiners at 3:30, so if I can change that. Kia had asked me to be here with this, a county liaison for this project, for this grant program, because they need a county person in order to apply for these state grants. So I do need to learn what's going to be expected in this process, so.
Sure, and we can probably handle, if you're not here, the questions.
Yeah, I'll see if I can push that to you. Should be good.
Madam Chair, should I add examining land surveyor for next week?
Yes, please.
Okay. 11:15 next Monday, is that what I said? All right.
I have another agenda. It's not relevant to me here, but can I drop this off to you?
Yes.
So I should, where it goes to print? And you don't have to do that now, but just as long as you have it, then it's off of my desk and on yours. Perfect. Add it?
It is Meadows, page two. Proposed major subdivision and request additional extension of preliminary plat approval. That'll be next. It's on page two before.
What's the name of something?
Meadows. It's Brad Campbell. You guys don't have to wait for me.
Okay.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome. So would you like me to do anything more with this or just leave it up to the commission now to discuss with Sean? Okay, Sean, I'll check. Bye, I will be back.
Can I get us something in here sideways? My name's John Wright. Is it not correct for us to have a bid on the engineering firm so we could have a multiple choice instead of just one? Isn't that correct?
Nobody else applied.
Huh?
Nobody else applied. It was advertised in the.
Was it advertised?
Yes, it was.
For four weeks, actually. After the first two weeks, we hadn't had anyone apply. And so we reapplied, or I'm sorry, readadvertised for two more weeks.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Community update. Franklin. Anything exciting going on there?
No, I really get to work on the budget. Basically, I have a lot of.
I also attended the same meeting. It was a good meeting. They had a lot of questions about history and what they can do. And also talked a lot about chemical. They had a shipment of chemical that was delivered here in the courthouse, which is hugely a liability, hugely illegal. So they're trying to work on how to mitigate that. LEPC was also last Thursday. We appointed as an interim temporary DES coordinator, Mike Conkey, last week. And he conducted an excellent meeting. We had representatives from the hospital there, also social services committee. And then we had Virginia and Mike both take off to fires afterwards. But the biggest news from the meeting was that Mike has appointed two temporary. But the biggest news from the meeting was that Mike has appointed two temporary interim deputies. They are not official deputies and that they have not been sworn in, but they will be acting deputies to assist Mike. And they are Julie Lethardt and Virginia Nurr.
Very good.
And I attended a hospital meeting, couple hospital meetings last week, just to kind of listen in and be available for questions.
That's my understanding. Mike is fighting fire down at Dennis right now.
Yeah.
We had gotten an email, all of us, to say that he was down there fighting fire.
Oh, Madam Chair, we also had the Winston Community Meeting.
Right.
I forgot about that.
And you and I both did it.
Yes, yeah. Good meeting, I thought.
It was a very good meeting. It was well attended. I was surprised. In the middle of the morning like that, there was, Trudy was there. Okay, let's do some mail. I'm gonna write here for you.
The folks at Winston are just requesting a speed study out Winston. The major reasons are the businesses there, there's cars driving on and off of the highway causing a hazard. And the other issue was the school bus. There's kids walking across the highway depending on what side of the street they live on and what side of the street picks them up, or the bus picks them up or drops them off.
When that caution light's flashing, isn't it 45 through there anyway?
Not necessarily. And I don't, we didn't discuss actually that issue.
I thought that that had a sign. It did, it used to have a sign right there with it.
I don't recall it being there. And I think that Lee Alt from Montana Department of Transportation was there. I think he would have mentioned that if it was there.
Well, I think, it might not be there now, but it seemed like it used to be when my kids were at school.
I think so. I think it was.
It'd be for the light.
It was a time, it was a timeframe for it also.
Yeah. Good idea with the kids, though.
Okay. Montana Wool Growers Predator Control Fund memorandum of understanding. Robert County agrees to allocate $1,223 for protection of sheep from destructive animals. Confirm motion.
I move that we sign the agreement, the MOU, the Department of Labor. Wool Growers Association.
Is that just wool growers? That isn't, with a cattle on with that one?
No, I have another one down here with cattle. Okay, Montana Stock Growers Association Predator Control. Amount is $7,557.
Madam Chair, we should probably have a second and a vote on the first motion.
Yep. Did you second that?
Yeah.
Motion seconded, then, that we pay to Wool Growers $1,223 for predator control. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. On the stock growers, it's $7,557, protection of cattle from destructive animals.
I move we sign the MOU with Montana Stock Growers.
I believe the reason, people out there, it's so much higher on the cattle part is they use it to chop a lot more. So does it say it in there? Maybe it does, but I think that's the reason why it's more expensive on the cattle.
And there's more of them.
Right.
Based on per fixed wing or helicopter flying.
Yeah.
Okay. Will you do second that?
Yeah, I think I already did it.
Okay. Yes, we moved and seconded, then, that we pay the Montana Stock Growers Association $7,557 for an MOU of understanding protecting cattle in Robert County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, where does those funds for making those payments for that MOU come out of?
That's just like a mill, I mean, it's right in the budget.
It's a budgeted line item.
Okay, I have claims. An amount of $89,892.88.
I move we pay the approved claims in the amount of $89,892.88.
Motion seconded, then, that we pay claims for voucher dated 8/14 in the amount of $89,892.88. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Madam Chair, we need to sign that as well.
I need to pick it.
Thank you.
I have payroll in the amount of $149,967.7.
I move we pay payroll.
Yes, we moved and seconded, that we pay payroll in the amount of $149,967.7. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried.
I don't know what to start with on this. Some of those, when it was just the two of us, some of those that required one person's signature and the other person's initials, I just put them in there.
That's Department of Health and Human Services for test water at the silos. This one is the amount of $165, $165 for Laura to attend Mako's conference and training session.
And that was just so that we keep the double check going.
And Montana Board of Crime Control, $75, conference and training registration for Laura.
And that's all old stuff. There's stuff that's pending.
I have minutes of August 12, 2013.
I move we approve the minutes of August 12 and August 14, 2013.
I think so. Let me just glance through.
Both of them?
Or which one, you're on the 12s?
Motion for both. And they were both sent out by the year of this project?
Right.
Second. We need to sign that.
Oh, thank you. Should we have a vote?
Yes. Yes, we moved and seconded, then, that we approve claims of August 12 and August 14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Three minutes.
What did I say?
You said claim.
Two minutes. We have a thank you from the Townsend Booster Club. County commissioners, thank you so much for writing the check for the stadium lights in such a timely fashion. You helped this process run smoothly. Your work with the Robert County Trust Board continues to make Townsend a better place. Thanks again, Barbara Lewis, Booster Club President.
And of course, that was not commissioner funds or taxpayer funds. That was the trust board.
That's right. And this is an invitation from Great West Engineering for us to join them for dinner on Tuesday. September 24th at 6:30 at the Montana Club, which is at the same time as the Mako Conference.
That is, I believe it was Captain Corthaus who came to Nick, excuse me, Mike Myers, a couple weeks ago. The back parking lot out here is a constant source of dust for the homeowners that live adjacent to the courthouse as we've been here in four years. We did sweep it a couple of years ago, but that helped. It was hard to do it with so many of the vehicles still on there. The ice, the parking lot is kind of in a cup shape, so the ice forms and it becomes a skating rink out there. And the deputies for the detention center walk across the parking lot to the hospital to pick up food for the inmates. So he approached Mike and asked if Mike would get some quotes on what it would cost to blacktop the parking lot in the back here. The thought with blacktop is it's black, it attracts the sun, and so it melts the ice sooner. And it would alleviate that health, that safety issue for employees. And that is the second quote with both Tim and Dana Rouse are doing a lot of the work. They're crews.
This one is from CAP Paving in East Helena, in the amount of $45,900.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maybe Commissioner Obergefell could answer this question. What was the close of proposals on this, or did you guys set one yet?
We haven't said anything yet for a while.
Okay. I didn't think I heard anything, but, so these are just, you've already got two proposals in? Or on a request for, if you will?
So this is just a change of that first one. The first one had the company doing all the removal of the old material. This one has Dana and Tim working together to remove the old material. It's a savings of about $11,000. So this is the same company. So it's not really two quotes that we have. It's more of a second proposal by the same company.
Okay. So is there going to be a final close date for opportunities for other companies to look at this? And just hasn't been advertised or gone that?
I believe it's been advertised. I'm not sure what the dates are off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
2.7 mil. Not bad.
No.
It's going in the right direction.
A letter from Montana Department of Transportation. Dear Elaine, congratulations. We're pleased to let you know that your request for National Highway Traffic Safety Administration funding through the Montana Department of Transportation, pardon me, has been approved for federal fiscal year 2014. The timeframe approved for funding covers October 1st through September 30th of 2014. Staff from the State Highway Traffic Safety Section will be in contact with your office to develop and finalize a contract, as well as to go over funding guidelines and reporting requirements. Please do not incur any cause for the fiscal year 2014 until your contract has been approved and signed by all parties. We're looking forward to partnering with you on this project to reduce traffic crashes, fatalities, and injuries on Montana roads.
Which project is that?
When we were at the district meeting, you actually got the packet from MDT when they were there, and those were the STIP projects. What was on there? Do you remember? Because I haven't seen them. I don't know that they've been brought back.
This is separate from the construction down there, I'm sure.
If you could bring that back and put it in the office, that'll have what those projects are in it.
This is from Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks. Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks is requesting public comment on proposed 2013 late season migratory bird regulations and a proposed 2014 work plan for elk management guidelines in areas with bird solases. Additional information is below, including deadlines for public comment. Know that there are different comment periods, deadlines for each of these two proposals. Okay, the bird one closes January 9. September 6th of 2014 on elk. And then there's another one for birds, August 26th of this year.
Madam Chair, we've been adding those to the items for discussion, action, and review so that if anybody does want to know about this, this is a good place they can find it and they can come to us with, they can either write their own comments or come to us if they want us to address it. Do you want that put back on the items for discussion? I'll add those three dates. Tammy's been doing it, so I'll just take it up to her.
Helena Ranger District, dear interested parties, I'm writing to inform you of my decision for the 1988 Elcorn Habitat Improvement Project on the Helena and Townsend Ranger Districts of the Helena National Forest. The project is designed to improve wildlife habitats by promoting forage, enhancing aspen, and creating diversity in trees, species, and stand age classes of logical plant stands from the Elcorn Mountains. The decision and supporting project information may be viewed on the Helena National Forest website, and the website is listed here. For more information, please contact Heather Degrees and her phone number. The decision is subject to appeal pursuant to 36 CFR 215.11. A written appeal must be submitted within 45 days following the publication date of this legal notice of the decision in the Helena Independent Record, the newspaper of record. It is responsibility of the appellant to ensure their appeal is received in a timely manner. The publication date of the legal notice of the decision in the newspaper record is the exclusive means for calculating the time to file the appeal. Appellants should not rely on date or timeframe information provided by other sources. Additional information on appeal content is provided in the 1988 Elcorn's Habitat Improvement Project Decision Memo posted on the Forest website. Thank you for your interest in the Helena and Townsend Ranger Districts. We have 10 minutes. I will take 10 minutes worth of public comment until our next appointment at 2:30. If anybody has anything.
I have a question. Is there any way we could either get the flag in front of the courthouse, taken down at dusk, or lit at night?
There is a light on it. It's on that end of the building. It comes up at it.
It sure looks dark. I mean...
Does it?
Yeah. They sell solar lights. Northern Equipment's got them, and they're not very expensive. Northern equipment's got them, and they're not very expensive, I'd even be willing to chip in.
Well, I know when they first went in, they put a light down at this west end.
I've driven by, you know, at night, and I'm, it's kind of, I think, you know, I think that's what you're supposed to do, is either take it down or have it lit. We've got kids dying overseas, and I think, you know. The other thing I have a question for you, you know, when I was with Yellowstone County, I think the statute's still on the books, that any vehicle, road vehicle, I'm not talking about tractors and stuff like that, that can be seen from a public road is to be licensed. And they went out and they said, hey, if you can't afford to license this vehicle, we'll tow it for you, you know, get rid of it. And of course, people didn't want to lose, you know, what they had, and so they quit license their vehicles, or pay a fine. And, you know, it doesn't have to be done overnight or something, but if you've got somebody wandering around, you know, hey, there's ten trucks and none of them have plates on them.
That's not tractors or ranch equipment, I would think.
No, it's not ranch equipment, it's people who have junk, and they don't want to part with it or something, I don't know, you know.
Saving it for good times' sake.
Or something, yeah. But they're supposed to be registered, if they don't want to lose the vehicle, then they should hide it from public view.
I agree.
That's a statute matter, third thing, but I'm seeing all, so I can't remember it.
Anybody else? Group members?
I've got one comment or question. Has anybody ever done a study to find out if ten percent of the people in the county use the hospital and ninety percent don't? That's the question. Has anybody ever done, like, a mail around and found out, you know, like, I've had five instances of visiting the hospital in the last ten years, or none? Has anybody ever done a study on that?
None that I've heard of.